Fantastic.
All right.
Good evening, everybody. We will call this meeting to order and we will entertain motions.
I motion, we enter into executive session for the purpose of discussing pending litigation and individual personnel items. Did I get that right?
The employment history of particular individuals.
Employment history of particular individuals.
Second.
Moved by Eldred, second by Adam. Discussion questions.
Corrected by Sean.
All in favor? Fantastic. Thank you, everyone. We do anticipate being back around 7:00 P. M.
That may be the first time I've ever read this.
We're returning from public session. Are there any modifications to the agenda? Hearing none, we will begin with our special presentation. And we have guests. So thank you. I don't know if there's an introduction. Hi, Adam.
Hello, everyone. For those of you that don't know, I'm Amanda Verba. I'm the operations officer for the school district. And if you had attended the finance committee meeting, I think it was a couple of months ago, you will already know what we have in store this evening. We have the honor of having Chef Anne and our amazing school nutrition team with us, just a part of them, but the leadership team as well as representatives from the Park Foundation. So I just want to introduce because I feel like we were pretty casual at finance committee. And so I really want to just sort of capture the honor of having Chef Anne. Right? We all know that our school nutrition services has been absolutely fantastic in this region and even in the state. We've done some amazing things with local cooking and scratch cooking and making sure that we utilize providers, right? Chef Anne is going to take that and just grow it. So Chef Anne is a graduate of the Culinary Institute of America, has had over forty-five years of experience as a cook and a chef, including twenty years in school food programs. She's authored two books, Bitter Harvest and Lunch Lessons Changing the Way We Feed Our Children. She's been an advocate for safe and sustainable food. She's had several TED Talks. She's also nicknamed, I didn't know this, the Renegade Lunch Lady. This is pretty amazing. And served for eleven years as the Director of Food Services for Boulder Valley School District in Boulder, Colorado. In partnership with the Park Foundation, Chef Anne, Ithaca City School District, and the other districts in the region are really looking to take the work that Chef Anne has done in a lot of very large school districts and really put us in terms of a small city school district as a model for the ways that New York State schools and others can really roll this forward. So they have a presentation for you. We are here to answer questions as well. There are members also of the Ithaca City School District District Office Team that are supporting this financially, socially, mentally, emotionally, physically, and then also through the capital project as well. So there's lots of wonderful moving parts that are just compelling us and propelling us forward to do some great work for kids. So Chef Anne, thank you.
Actually, thank you. That was lovely, but I'm not, I am not the one who is going to upgrade this food service. It is this team. You guys have the dream team. You've got an amazing team. We, as the Chef Anne Foundation, are supporting them, but I think this presentation is going to start with Beth.
Hi, I'm Beth. I haven't met the new board members yet. I'm a registered dietitian and I've worked here in the district about six years. I've been a school food service director since nineteen ninety-five, and this is the best district I've ever worked at. Sorry to the other districts, but this is the best district I've ever.
This is not recorded. Don't worry.
Where we've been managing changes, well, you know, in COVID, we were out there at the houses. We were feeding the kids. We knew there was hunger and we were appreciated. The kids would wave at us out the window and we loved doing it. So COVID to present day, here we are. Things have changed back hopefully and moving forward. So universal lunch at the high school happened this year. It was a half hour lunch period and they knocked it out of the park. In nine minutes, they could serve hundreds of kids. So we're going to continue with that this year. We plan on having two sites. We're going to do inside the kitchen area and at the concessions area near the gym. So it would be easier for kids to wait in two different lines and two different sites. And we have a new computer system that we put into place in November. We've made lots of new equipment purchases. Part of that is this project. We're waiting for a food processor to come in that is a huge food processor that will help process our fruits and vegetables this year. We're working on a capital project at Boynton. Have you heard? The floor has been poured. So hopefully we'll be back in there very soon. And we have this great partnership with the Chef Anne Foundation through the Park Foundation. We have the CEO of the Park Foundation here, Rachel, and Sue Kettles here from the Park Foundation, and Chef Anne also has Mara here, the CEO of the Park Foundation. So what they have done for us in this, in this partnership is we're training the staff, training of us. It's been, we've been in training for three days, but actually we had a strategic plan that we started last year that we've been working on. And they come to us and we have TA calls. What do you think about this recipe? What do you think about this ingredient? So it's been great. And that's been going on all year and it continues to go on. And look at this picture. We met because of this great group. We met Leah Webb yesterday, Senator Leah Webb. So she is a real advocate for healthy food and food for kids. So I thanked her for the forty percent guideline that we are getting with the CEP this year, and hopefully they can push the twenty-five percent through soon. Where we are, we're into our sustainability initiatives, and I'll talk about that in another slide. Equity inclusion. Jamie can talk to you about the menu and how we're going to make it culturally inclusive. Local procurement, do a lot of that. We're getting the New York State All Beef Hot Dogs. We get the Ithaca Tofu. We get the Ithaca Bakery Bread. Yes, Smith Eggs, they're right up the street too, and several, you know, small ingredients and fruits and vegetables that we can get. We realigned our whole staff. So this is going to be interesting. Jamie's now the executive chef and Jen is the operations. And so they're going to be in Boynton. We brought our cooks over from the high school and they're going to be in Boynton. I'm going to the high school. Just because it's such a big building and they'll need a little bit up there. Here we go. We discontinued all à la carte for increased equitability. So that was only at the secondary schools. But as Chef Anne pointed out, if one student can buy a bottle of water and the one behind them can't afford it, it's not equitable. So we've, we've taken the, and it's also a nutrition thing, but sustainability. We've worked with Zero Waste Ithaca to sustain a grant for three thousand two hundred sporks. Some are here. We're going to start at Boynton and LACS on the sporks. And the other schools, secondary schools later in the school year. We have a grant into a foundation that we know of for some bulk milk coolers. And hopefully we'll get that and we'll be doing two types of bulk milk. And with that, we'll get some reusable cups. I also, we started trays at Boynton last year and I ordered some plates. We decided as a group, three compartment plates are nicer. They don't look so square. Yeah, institutional. So we ordered some three compartment plates to try at the secondary schools that have dishwashers. So CEP, we had the six buildings, Bel Sherman and Annex, Keoga Heights, Fall Creek, BJM, Enfield, and LACS coming on this year. It's been communicated out to the families that they will be free for breakfast and lunch. We're still waiting and Chef Anne says she doesn't know either because I thought she had a connection with the USDA to hear when the next, the twenty-five percent will be available. And at twenty-five percent poverty level, all our schools will be free. Hopefully that'll be coming sooner. Now we're going into a scratch cooked meal system and Jamie is going to tell you a little bit about the menu since she's the executive set.
Thank you, Beth. So our menu, we are going to start doing a six week rotation. So it'll be the same menu for the entire school year, and that allows kids to see something that is new to them five to six times throughout the year. We're focusing on quality products, cooked chill method that will be delivered to the schools the day before. So it's ready in their buildings. It's going to be two options a day, plus the salad bar is going to be our main focus in every school. We'll have a salad bar that's produced at Boynton. It'll look really consistent. The secondary schools will also have a third menu choice, which will be a sandwich that you could see over to the side on the right here. We are doing a lot of scratch cooking. We've changed breakfast to reduce all of the sugar we can. Some gluten-free cereals. We're going to be baking all of our breakfast breads in the morning, overnight oats, baked oatmeal is our focus. We're going to bring in some products that are cleaner label like a Boar's Head cold cut deli sandwich style and some other cheeses. Being at the high school for the last seven years where I was, there was some menu items that were pretty successful that I'm going to roll out into the district all around, like a tomato pesto panini on the Ithaca Bakery Bread. It's really popular at the high school. We're going to see if the levels are really going to enjoy it. We're bringing in some Ithaca tofu to make like gyros and things like that. Some international items. We're going to do a Korean style sloppy joe that's been super popular. And a Thai red curry with our government turkey was one of the biggest hits at the high school. So we're hoping they'll enjoy all of them. Thanks.
That's great. Did I see your croissant on there as well?
Yes. Oh, wheat too.
No joke.
So where we're going, actually Jen is going to take all the operations questions. So that Jamie's could take all the food and Jen's going to take the operations. If there's a fire or water main break, call Jen. She usually here first thing in the morning anyway, so sometimes she calls Heather because she's here at five A.M. So she sometimes, she saw the Boynton thing happening early. So any of those questions, call Jen. We're going to increase the local usage when we do the bulk milk. We're going to do that yearly. We're hiring, we're looking at our hiring processes. We're going to hire talented professionals that meet the job requirements. So I'm going to work with HR on civil service requirements, sanitation requirements. And we're looking forward to free nutritious meals for all. I can't say that enough. I'm hoping it's by January at the latest, but we just have to wait for the government. So are there any questions or anything for Chef?
Well, first, just another round of applause. Look, Anne, did you want to speak to us as well?
I do, just for a minute. I think what I want to say is how far this team has come. I first started working with this team a year ago, this, this week, a year this week. And where they have come with their menu, the quality of the food, their ordering, having a priority on more local procurement, really thinking about training and how to do it, consolidating production, putting salad bars in every school that every kid will have salad bar that has fresh fruits and vegetables every single day, every school. They can have it as a side. They can have it as an entree. It will have animal protein and vegetable protein. So it can be a vegan option. It can be a gluten-free option, vegetarian option. This team has done, has worked so hard and moved the needle so much in a year. It's incredible. The amount of change and the amount of work they've done is, it's, it's awesome and it's awe inspiring and they've worked so hard to, to make that happen. And it's going to be a lot of work this year. I mean, you know, it's, it's not easy to do what they're doing. They're going to need support and they, you know, their administration team is really helping them. And, you know, just that they're moving back into a kitchen the same day they're going to start prepping, you know? So they've got a lot to do and it's not always going to be easy and not everyone's going to be happy from the first day with, with higher quality but less choices. But what they are doing and, and what they have done and how far they've come in this year, it's just really mind boggling. And they have a strategic plan. We went over the fall portion of their strategic plan today. And there's a lot of stuff they're working on, but they have done so much. So I just want to say kudos to you guys. You've just been amazing. So you guys have a great team. And that's, that's it for me. I'm, I'm honored to work with them and help them and support them and their endeavors.
I know my board member colleagues and I'm certain there are questions or kudos. So questions, comments, Jill?
Yeah, I don't know who this goes to. Sourcing the departmental budget. Who's that?
Oh, that was what we did at the finance committee and if you have any other questions, we put it on.
Okay, I'm going back over it and I, I don't remember the answer, but if, if we go to all three meals, it looks like thirty-one percent of the, of the departmental budget is gone.
We'll get more in reimbursement from the USDA portion of the budget.
That will take.
That will take that place, if not more. More.
And it would be more. And, and the other question was, this doesn't add up to a hundred percent. It adds up to forty percent. It's thirty-one plus seven plus one plus four.
On the other side, the red.
Oh, mine doesn't show.
It's a color. There you go.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Additional questions, according to that.
Could you just repeat, which are the schools that are CEP currently?
Bel Sherman and Bel Sherman Annex, Keoga Heights, Fall Creek, LACS, Enfield, and BJM. We grouped them together to make, to hit the forty percent poverty rate.
That's fifteen hundred of these beds, right?
Yes. I did. Fifteen hundred breakfast and lunch.
Thank you for additional three thousand units. Yep, yep. That's amazing. More, good. Additional questions?
Oh, just so, how do you, how is the bulk milk? How does that work?
So have you seen the milk machines that they have at College Feeding?
Yes.
So it's less waste.
Great.
So reimburse, the cops will have cops available for them and it'll be less waste of all those cartons that get recycled.
Do you remember the freshman fifteen? The, the chocolate bulk milk machines at Alfred University was the result. Thank you, Jamie.
This question is for Chef Anne and maybe the Park Foundation folks. Given your aerial perspective, I'm assuming you've seen some of this work happens cyclically, right? It's in favor, it dissipates. Can you give us maybe the top two challenges that we would face as governance team and as executives maintaining this, making this sustainable over the long haul? What can't we see around the corner?
I think there will be challenges in making sure that we can hire, that the team can hire really good people and recruit, retain really good people that wages can keep up with that and making sure in a community like this that wages can be commensurate with cost of living. So I think that, that hiring is always going to be an issue. So that's one thing. I think that there are equipment issues across the district. I don't think this is new to anybody. Food services has some equipment issues that need to be resolved and there's a plan for that. So that, that will continue to happen over time. But I think in the long term, these guys got it. In the short term, as board members, you may hear complaints. And when you do, I think you have to just take a deep breath and a complaint could be, my kid hates the new blah, 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 blah. And they don't have hamburgers every day anymore. Or where are the french fries? They used to only eat french fries. And you as board members may get some of that. And I think, you know, the best thing you can do for them is take a deep breath and know that, that the food is getting better and the quality is getting better. And it takes seven to twelve times for kids to be introduced to new food before they accept it. So when you hear that, you could call them up and say, hey, I heard that. But I told them about all the great changes you're doing and they're going to have a marketing plan. We're working on marketing tomorrow. So I, I don't think there's anything really unforeseen. The strategic plan they have is for three years. They've worked on this great strategic plan, but we've broken it down to what they can do in the next three months and then we'll go from there. So they've, they've got it. But there could be a little bit of bumps in the beginning because, you know, food is personal. So just back them up. That's what, what, what they need is your support.
Beth, you have invited me, I know personally before, to your rollouts. And I sat there with tiny people bumping my knees on the elementary, you know, cafeteria table. Maybe you might want to bring us in on a rotating basis so we can experience it.
That would be wonderful if you came in. And we did some taste tests with the BJM summer schools this year. So that was great. And we're planning on doing it right with the kids. Weekly, I think, as soon as we get new things out, we're going to do taste tests with them. I do foresee me having a high schooler, no snacks is an issue at home and I do foresee that coming down the line, but hopefully we can get ahead of it. Put it in the tattler is a positive thing. An equitable and nutritious thing.
Chef Anne, you've never met, but I would, I can tell that you're an optimist dude because you said we may hear something. I just, I want to be on the record that we'll, we'll be ready for the support and the support. Additional questions?
I, this was great to hear about. Do you guys, you mentioned that there would be options or iterations that could provide for vegan options, gluten-free options. Any other groups like kosher options or halal or anything like that?
The salad bar should be able to provide for that. And of course, if we get the doctor's note, I, I have specific doctor's note. I'll get, get soy milk, get almond milk, get any of those. I go to Wegmans for the small amount and now we can order some of the soy. We have so many soy with the allergens. We order that from Cisco. So we do have that in-house. So any doctor's note we provide. It's on the IEP.
Any other board member questions? I can just tell you from our board colleagues watching the reaction, we are as excited as you are. We would love to have invitations to do some of this. Thank you to the Park Foundation for always being a partner and supporting young people in our community. And I know you all don't care enough because my mother was in food service for a long period of time. Deepest gratitude. Thank you. Thank you for the work that you do. This is fantastic. This is great. Looking forward to it. What a good way to start a school year. Yes, thank you. We have no one who has signed up for public comment. So again, I'll presume there are no more responses. Great. Our student reps have not as of yet joined us and it may be a little bit more time before they do join us once the school year gets started. So we will move from that part of the agenda as well. And that brings us to the consent agenda. And we will entertain motions.
I'll move the consent agenda. Second.
Who was the second? Sorry. You got that. So moved by Mara, second by Jill. Discussion, questions, conversation about anything on the consent agenda. Emily, I did say I sent one, I told you know, I sent one correction for the minutes was that the minutes for the August tenth meeting should also include that the board approved the Morocco trip. That was the only addition. No, right? Is that okay by folks? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? As I said, the board members that are here, thank you very much. And it brings us to Dr. Brown, Superintendent Report. Could you see your Dr. Brown?
You as well. And thank you for the opportunity to share, Professor, two quick items, just to share with the board an update on our planning for the summer. And we've had a wonderful two day that as we've had our annual administrative team retreat. You know, this year's theme and focus was on moving, transitioning out of crisis mode back into instructional leadership. And I feel vulnerable by saying that, but I think every administrator in the room, if truly honest, would say we've been in crisis mode for years. And it feels good to transition back to instructional leadership. And our instructional leadership will be different and has evolved. We are focusing on cultivating the genius and joy in all learners. And that includes the adults in which we work with. So we spent a lot of time talking about how we're going to cultivate joy and assess and find the genius in everyone and how that will be built into our curriculum. So that was day one. We did much of that today. As we, you know, we, we've been immersing ourselves and attempting to model what it's like to build and construct an anti-marginalization curriculum unit. And part of that work is the field study and field study work where we go out into our local community and engage with the population, engage with our young people and bring that back into what we write as far as curriculum. And today, our administrators, we began our, our morning at St. James AME Church. One, it was amazing to see the monument outside of the church. If you have not seen the monument that's dedicated to Civil Warriors and and Professor, thank you again. That, that movie, if you have not seen that documentary and your voice in the background, in some ways it's all, it's, it's intimidating to me. Hear you in a different context, but you did a wonderful job narrating it. But it's an amazing story that everyone should watch. And then we went into the church and Pastor King welcomed us and gave a presentation about the history of the church, much of which I did not know admittedly. And including, I knew about it being a site on the Underground Railroad. I did not know, and he reminded me and everybody in the room several times that it was the place where the Alpha Phi Alpha fraternity was founded. And that, so yeah, he may, he shouted me out a few times on that one. But anyway, there was so much about the history of that church. I want everyone in our community, most importantly, our young people, to have an opportunity to be in a space and to learn like our admin team learned today. And after that very moving and impactful experience, we then And after that very moving and impactful experience, we then transitioned to Seminopolis. We had lunch. We, and I know folks are wondering what was happening with so many administrators on the comments today. We did not lose a kid, all right? Today was not a day where we lost a child. But we were there and we engaged with the movie today. And again, we heard your voice today and when the spirit moves you, the Dorothy Cotton story of sorts, I, you know, I know I'm not doing it justice, but that was a ninety minute powerful experience for our team. And we are already thinking about how we can bring that documentary. And Laura Bronco joined us today. So many local legends and trail and treasures were in that film. But our administrative team is thinking about how we can bring that to all young people and adults in our school community. Again, it was just a great two days. I could talk much more about what we've experienced together. I do wish to extend an invitation to the board members to be with us at Convocation next Thursday, right? Thursday, Wednesday, I'm losing track of days now. The thirty first. We will begin at, help me out, y'all. We're going to begin at eight thirty on that day, nine. Eight thirty. So eight, so Mr. Harris, eight o'clock, we will start Convocation this year. And so, and we will welcome all of our educators back together where we would, you know, do some awards, some recognitions. And I will be sharing some thoughts to frame our year and our work. And we're looking forward to it. And we would love to see all of you there too, as we like to recognize you too. So again, thank you for the opportunity to share.
Wear your hats. Wear your hats.
Oh, and where you, yeah, that's that's the secret. Yeah, y'all, yeah. Cool.
Thank you, Dr. Brown. I would be remiss if I didn't mention, folks should know this, but I tell everyone that the St. James AME Zion Church is the oldest, longest serving church in the Ithaca community, dates back eighteen thirty three. And Dorothy Cotton, if folks have not had a chance to see the movie by Seminopolis, and not because I'm in it. Much more because Dorothy Cotton is one of those people that moves history and had the time to live in our community for thirty plus years. Just what an amazing and amazing soul. So I would highly recommend folks get a chance to see that film. It is already starting to win awards. They're taking the film festivals. It's such a well done film by Photosynthesis Productions, a local film production company. It just, it moves at the right pace. It's got great information. It's got great music. Dorothy loved to sing. For those of us who've had a chance to be in Dorothy's presence, I mean, it's amazing. And for folks who may not know, Dorothy Cotton was the only woman who was a part of Dr. Mark the King's Southern Christian Leadership Conference Executive Committee. And so there were seven people and Dorothy was the one keeping people in line. And as I say, probably wrote more Dr. King speeches than maybe one did now. So I highly recommend folks check that out. So thank you for bringing our ministers. I'm sure that was a moving day for folks. Transition. Next up, we have school district business and we have a district comprehensive improvement plan, including a presentation, if I'm not mistaken, and some additional information. So I will pass it off to our phenomenal team.
Hi, everybody. Good evening. Good to see everybody. I'm Lily Talcott. I'm the Deputy Superintendent here in Ithaca. And with me is an amazing colleague.
Lisa Sahasrabi, Equity and Diversity Officer for the Ithaca City School District.
And we're going to provide some framing around our accountability status, which sounds maybe not like the most fun thing in the world, but I will say there are times in New York State and in the field of education when lemons are presented. And this is one of these situations where I feel like we are just working to make lemonade.
So we're Beyonce.
We're Beyonce. I mean, Renaissance tour. Here we are. Uh, we're, and I'm actually not being facetious though, right? There's, you know, board members who were on the board last year have some knowledge of this, of course. And so there's some context that we attached in the agenda as well, just to reconnect you with what we shared back in the spring. But the process has been rolling and Lisa's going to provide some context for us and is doing a really wonderful job leading it. So thank you, Lisa.
You're very welcome.
Pass it on to you.
Great. So in alignment with the Every Student Succeeds Act, which is we know as the SSA, New York State Education Department has developed indicators to measure school performance. Here we go. So one thing to understand is that all of the data that is used is not from the twenty one, twenty, sorry, not from the twenty two, twenty three school year, but from the twenty one, twenty two school year. And those, that data is used to make decisions moving forward. Schools were ranked by achievement and the ones whose indexes fell in the bottom ten percent were given a performance level of one. Those schools are identified as CSI and or TSI schools. I'll go into that in a little bit. For each indicator, every school earns a score of one through four for a subgroup that is considered that's called all students and then other subgroups as well. For instance, there's subgroups for black students, there's subgroups for students with disabilities and and so forth. There is also a number that you have to have of students that fall into that group in order to be a subgroup. So not all schools have all of those subgroups. So we have two schools that fall into this category. Enfield was identified as a comprehensive support and improvement school based on the performance of the school's all students subgroup. BJM is identified as a targeted support and improvement school based on the performance of the school's black students subgroup. And then the Ithaca City School District was identified as a target district because we have one or more schools in these categories. So both BJM and Enfield completed a comprehensive need assessment. And in the slides that are linked to your agenda, you can also click on that diagnostic tool if you want more information about that. But they both schools completed a comprehensive need assessment and then use that needs assessment and additional data to develop their school comprehensive education plans, which we call FCEP plans. Both of those plans are also linked to your agenda for you, for you to look at. Plans were developed in consultation with both internal and external stakeholders. So for example, Enfield included students because they were able to start this process before the school year ended last year. So they had a student survey that they could use for data, staff, community members and caregivers. The school district also is required to complete a district comprehensive improvement plan, which is called DCIP, and that is also linked to the agenda. We used local data and the two plans that were developed from and by Enfield and BJM. We involved stakeholders. Stakeholders were invited to come review the local data. And there's a list of local data. We we looked at chronic absenteeism for a four year trend. We looked at at grade level reading, which right now is FMP scores, FMP or FOPAS and PNOW assessment scores, the percent proficient on New York State ELA and math exams, of course. We also looked at middle school final worst grades, which I think members of that stakeholder committee found really very interesting. And then we looked at the district end of year survey that was completed by students, staff and community members. After looking at all those data points and having some rich discussions and of course, the two plans by Enfield and BJM, we then set priorities that will help to support the BJM and Enfield communities and the larger school district also. Going back to making lemonade, this is the opportunity for us to engage in culturally and linguistically responsive practices on a large, on a large scale. And you'll see that reflected in in the district level plan as well. So all three plans are linked to your agenda for you to review. And I think at the net, our next board meeting, we will have the principals of Enfield Elementary School and BJM Elementary School here for you to ask questions. And so you can get more information. All three plans need board approval before they're considered done and put into practice for the beginning of the school. Any questions for me now?
I'm sure there are going to be. Let me just, right, so we're talking about, so look at all the plans. We're closing in close to seventy, seventy five pages of reading, which I'm sure my board colleagues would do. Or is anything that you would highlight in the plans to make sure that the board should, for both of you, that we should understand or at least be able to be proficient to respond to and ask from the community members?
Yeah, I think the thing to look at specifically are in the building level plans, the main points are called commitments. So I think, and so basically they're, they're the goals. So Enfield has three, I think BJM has two. Those are the things to really look at. And then to go into the strategy section to see what they want to do to achieve those goals. The district level plan doesn't have commitments. We have priorities. So you, and we only have three. So you can look at those three very similarly, you'll notice to the goals that the schools make and then look at our strategies for how to, how to do all that stuff at a district level.
Board colleagues, questions?
Could you clarify for me the subgroup of all students?
It's everybody.
Everyone. Okay, that's what I thought.
Every subgroup.
What's that?
Every subgroup.
Okay.
All together.
All right. And then could you clarify for me how the designations for Enfield and BJM, that they were based on a test results from fifty students in the case of Enfield and twenty four students in the case of BJM?
Yes.
They are two tabs. Yes.
Yes. And well, there are, yes. And it's not just the students, but the number of tests they took. So for example, Enfield, and this is, this is on this data sheet that's also a test that people saw earlier, I think. Right? So the Enfield, Enfield's designation was based on a hundred test results from fifty students, because all those fifty students took two exams, math and and reading, math and and ELA. For BJM, it's forty eight results based on twenty four students.
I have a quick question that might just go beyond what we know about how the state evaluated this, because it's certainly a little bit chronic absenteeism. Progress for ELL learners, right, English language learners and these test results?
Yeah, so.
But do you get us, did you get a breakdown of this?
We didn't because all the state needed to do this year is look at the student academic achievement on the state tests because there were enough school districts in that ten percent. They have to take the bottom ten, ten percent. So sometimes they have to use more to get more numbers. They didn't have to. We only use one measure.
So one way to look at this is we can apply a deficit model approach and be like, you know, we have schools that are in dire need and what are we doing? Another approach would be that the state is trying to provide a school with additional resources to educate students. Can you speak to that before taking a positive approach?
Yeah. So the next thing that that happens is we create a school improvement grant. We write a school improvement grant. We are eligible for fifty thousand dollars from the state for our district. I'm going to get the numbers wrong. Fifty thousand dollars for BJM as a targeted school and two hundred thousand dollars for Enfield. So that money can be put into whatever we, we can use it for almost anything we want. That's the grant that we're in the process of writing now, and then that will be approved or manipulated and almost approved by the city.
I have a couple of questions. The the middle school final course grades, is that, I mean, I guess, because that would be functionally determined, like, I guess, by the teachers. It's not necessarily a standardized score. It could be more subjective, but it didn't, I mean, did it not? Was that a, a given point that was was poor? You know, like, did that get called out as a?
No, what what we used, so, so when we were looking to create just priorities for our district, we wanted a broader view, right? And sitting at the table for for that meeting was also the principal of Boynton and some staff members. And of course, some of our families had children at at multiple schools. So as we're creating a district plan, we wanted to make sure that we were including measures from those places. So looking at middle school final course grades were really interesting. Middle schools are now on a four point scale for grades. And some of the questions that folks on the stakeholder committee asked were, you know, why aren't black students getting fours? Why are, right? So we, and I don't have that data right in front of me. I can get a query if you would like to to see. But those were the questions we were looking at. So if we're looking at those questions, then looking at the data, creating the questions and then setting priorities to kind of, to kind of fix. What is it that is, what is it about our teaching and learning? How are we set up that in the middle schools, there are not a lot of fours being received as course grades for our white students? What's that about?
And Adam, I don't know if this is your question. The state didn't use that. We use that.
That's, that's what we. The state only looked at, the only two schools that qualified were identified as CSI or TSI schools were Enfield and BJM. So they didn't look. So our middle schools for next year are fine.
You send you to a couple of.
Yeah, also, so when, when they talk about like proficiency on the ELA and math exams, what, what was their criteria?
Level three, one, two, three, four, three and four are proficient.
Okay. And then do we have that data anywhere that we can see?
Yes, it's on the state report card.
And remember, it's for.
Twenty twenty one?
Yes.
It's also on our equity report card too.
What's that?
It's in two places, our, our state, yeah.
Anything else?
This is just like hope in the future that it'd be amazing to do longitudinal data, right? Where you can watch if we are tracking towards middle school test score, like as the students come out of our elementary schools and move up. Maybe it won't even be this. Maybe that's even better.
There are definitely times.
Really appreciate the holistic efforts, maybe. What the state looked at versus the other data that you pulled in at the local level, that was amazing.
And I will say it's really handy for us to to sometimes look at things more longitudinally. So, you know, speed, just speaking of detracking math, it helped us understand how kids were doing later on if they were accelerated early and they were not doing well. So that was helpful information for us. It's also something that the federal government put into place for Race to the Top. You know, every iteration, right? It was like no child left behind, race to the top. Elementary and secondary Students Act, right? So just like transitions, but that was one of like the big five things of Race to the Top where we're actually trying to track kids from kindergarten to like twenty one better.
Any preliminary thoughts about how the resources will be distributed? If, say, in Enfield, because that's a bigger amount, are we talking? I'm sure we're talking kids, classrooms and families, but any thoughts about how that will be broken down?
Well, part of that is designed, if it's okay, if I just jump in here. Part of that is designed in some ways, the, the staffing that we've already created and set up for, for the coming year. So for example, Lisa's position, for example, there's a teacher who currently teaches at Enfield, who's going to be providing some, some additional support outside of the classroom, not directly always with young people. So those were some decisions that we, we made preemptively. We added another section at Beverly J. Martin, right? So we're, you know, certainly trying to to look at the, the information that we had in front of us to, to make some decisions a little later on. But then again, what's actually relatively lovely about this process is it's supposed to be collaborative. We, we work with stakeholders. We, we work with stakeholders to come up, to design the commitments or priorities, and then the strategies that may cost money then are funded. So this summer, we've been paying folks to meet over and over, right?
And, and some of the, uh, B J M people, uh, at, at the B J M meetings were talking that extra recess. Right? So that's something that can go into that grant part of B J M's.
Is there no more questions?
One more. What's the F R P L statistics at both schools, the free and reduced lunch population, F R L P?
I actually don't know that off the top of my head, but, uh, I can look on the state report card and shoot that to you via email. When I was at Enfield, it was around seventy-five percent when I was teaching there.
Not that it matters, because they're all gonna be eating healthy food for free, but still, it's an indicator.
Did you guys struggle to get engagement from stakeholders? I'm just curious how well or how easy that was?
I think, um, I think, I think this struggle, I think the answer is medium. Right, yes. It, it was difficult, um, on the district level because it was summer.
Yeah.
We couldn't start the district plan until, um, the other ones were done. Um, Enfield was able to start their plan early, so I would say their, 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 uh, team was probably larger than B J M's. Um, but there was a really good representation, I thought. And so there were community members, there were parents. Um, Karen Yearwood was able to come to the district level one. So, so it was, I think it was good. And, and if you look on the last page of all the plans, is a list of all, of all the people who.
To answer Mr. Eldred, Mr. Harris's question, uh, seventy-five percent at Enfield for twenty twenty-two data, um, which is twenty twenty-one, twenty twenty-two school year, and sixty-eight percent at B J. And those are students who qualify or would be defined as economically disadvantaged. Um, if folks aren't familiar with the New York State Report Card, um, I always try to send my students to it, but I also try to remind them that there's usually a year lag and the information isn't always complete, if that makes sense. It's not always completely accurate. We even have much better information in-house than the state would have at, at their level. So looking at our equity report card, it's probably a, a better, um, data tool, I would argue, than the state report cards. I don't know if, as the experts, if you all would agree with that.
Yeah. And I think it's important to look at street level data, right? Which is what our equity report card does a better job with than just the New York State, um, scores that come back one test on two days, and that's it, right?
And a single group, as opposed to trying to find ways which identities may intersect, right? That's what, you know, the state data never gives us that, or rarely gives us, you know, a multiple identities per student.
Like they don't collect it?
No, and my student of color and I'm economically disadvantaged. What's the test score? What's the test score for that?
So what you can expect next time is, uh, people you can direct questions to who work at both schools exclusively. So Ms. Jackie Richardson, the principal of Beverly J Martin Elementary School, and Mr. Keith Herrenton, the principal of Enfield Elementary School, will be here along with the amazing Lisa Sahasurbuddhe. And, um, so certainly feel free to bring questions about process, about hopes, about anything, um, in relationship to the plans. And then you can expect that there will be a resolution on that item for you to vote for each of them.
And to my board colleagues, I would homely recommend if you have questions to send in advance, doesn't mean they'll get, we can ask them in public, but it would be a better opportunity for the folks here to be able to present the information as well. So, uh, if you have questions, please feel free. We can send them collectively. You can send them directly to Lily and Lisa. It'd probably be a good idea to share them with all board members, because we may be asking the same questions as well. Um, but that would be helpful for folks to prepare for. We will have to approve these plans at our next full board meeting. Well, fantastic. Thank you, Dr. Brown. Thank you for the presentation. Greatly appreciated. Thank you.
Professor, not connected to the presentation, but something, a comment. Uh, the abolitionist me won't let me be quiet right now, um, because I'm gonna advocate for something that I know I may never see, but as my mama taught me, you fight for it anyway. The, the term subgroup, and I've shared this with Secretary Duncan, um, Secretary King, and I will work Secretary Cardona in a couple of weeks. Um, I'm hoping that we could abo- abolish that term and that usage. Um, we could substitute membership group or identity group very easily. Um, as a young person who had been referred to in a subgroup, and that subgroup was always in the red and never showing up good, it always was a trigger word. Um, so I've struggled with it. And then it's, it's seeing my own children and the children I serve show up in subgroups and then having to explain how your subgroup isn't doing so well, or if it's doing better than others, I just struggle with it. So I know I may never see, I've, it's in the federal code. Just like the words like catch and release, illegal, alien, and other words in the federal code. But this is one that for some people presents, um, a challenge, and I would advocate for us, even here locally at this table, to say membership group or identity group in lieu of subgroup. Thank you.
Now I have my opening lecture for classes tomorrow. Uh, that's a great point, Dr. Brown. I appreciate you bringing to us and not sitting in silence. And that's felt very open. Thank you.
Well done. Thank you all. Thank you. Well done.
Um, we will continue with our agenda transition item, agenda, uh, twelve point two is a resolution authorizing the easement agreement with the city of Ithaca. This has sort of been an ongoing conversation, and I don't know if we have discussion is, are you the lead on this, Amanda? I don't know. I know it was on our facilities committee agenda, right? It did make it through facilities. We did have a conversation about it, a brief conversation.
I don't remember us discussing.
It's, it's not, this is not, um, a long item in any way, and it's not a difficult item. What we are trying to do is to, A, have a better relationship in terms of communication with the city of Ithaca when they need to access our property. Um, and they need easement to get onto our property to do their repairs, updates, restorations, all the things, all the good work that they do. So this is formalizing of an agreement that we believe is very old that we actually couldn't put our hands on, but we know it exists because we all said it exists. So this is just essentially just bringing that forward, um, to current day to be able to allow for, for, um, that access. This is different from one that we'll be bringing forward to you, which is specific to G I C and maintenance of those buildings. Um, because I know that they both, for the, the building that they have currently and the one that they have taken over, um, for the youth center, gymnasium, teen space, that also is gonna need some opportunities, right, for, for cleaning of ducts and vents and things like that, that are coming on and painting or things. So that's gonna be a separate piece, but this one was really specific, um, mainly to, to the Boynton campus, but others, other city school district campuses that have things like sewer lines, utility lines, water lines, things like that.
So this is right from the corner of Lake and Cuba.
Correct.
That pot of land between the.
Correct. That's right. That's right. And again, due to timing, we talked about this. They've been doing the work, if you haven't noticed. And this is the formality that we really, this should be the precursor to that work, but we're catching up with it, and that is okay. Because we've, they've, we've been in fantastic communication, but we just want the board to be able to have action for that, for official.
So before moving further, we'll entertain motions first.
I move to approve the resolution authorizing an easement agreement with the city of Ithaca.
Uh, Katie, one on one, so by Laura, second by Katie. I'll get your next time out. Um, any additional discussion or questions, conversation? Folks need any additional information? Hearing none, we'll call the question. All in favor? That is unanimous for the board members here. Thank you very much. Um, we do have on our agenda committee updates. Um, we are missing a couple of board members. I don't know if it's in our interest for the public to try to do with a brief run of committee updates. We should put them on our next committee agenda. How would the board like to proceed?
Uh, well, I pretty much at the last meeting spoke about H R and, uh, policy, and nothing else has happened since then, so.
So then maybe we hear facilities and finance real quick then, if that works.
I, I'm gonna pass on facilities simply because I forgot to bring, it was a very lengthy meeting with a lot of stuff, but I can bring my notes on it.
Great. So we'll add it for the next.
If we could add it to the next.
We absolutely can.
But I haven't rubbed sunscreen in my eye. That really helps things work.
So, sorry, so, sorry. Uh, Elgin, would you like to talk about finance, or you wanna wait until next?
No, ours was quick. We had a basic overview about revenue and expenses, and we brought up a couple of points about, uh, what the foundation aid looked like with a new formula and trying to get some information about that. And again, to look at the dollar bill or the man that's put together, representing where our money comes from. Next time, we'll explore a little bit more where it goes and start diving into what our numbers look like for real before, um, the season gets too far underway.
Great. Reminder, folks, that we do a year-long budgeting process. We're already planning for next year's budget. We already started that process. This is a continuation. So thank you for that. And I know we had, um, curriculum earlier today. Do you mind if I, uh, uh, put an update about today's meeting?
I'm gonna pass, but on to our new chair curriculum. Adam?
Okay. Um, yeah, I mean, it was just sort of an introductory meeting today. Um, we talked a little bit about learning forward, I C S D, sort of catching people up. Um, and then we sort of talked about some of the things that we might wanna talk about this year, and we talked a little bit about, um, the role of test scores and other ways to look at data and information, um, objectively and subjectively, and talking about how we're gonna choose the things, um, to look at, um, the data points that we're going to look at, and also a little bit about how, you know, test scores are a good, uh, starting point to get some information. Um, but you sort of have to come up with an understanding of why the scores are the way that they are, and that's very complicated. We talked about some of those different things that might factor into that, and then we ran out of time. So, uh, maybe a better or broader update next time.
Fantastic. Thank you, Adam. Congratulations for the new role of work as chair of the committee. Um, and we have not had our, uh, quarterly audit committee yet, so we'll wait for that update once that happens. Fantastic. Moving forward to it. Um, and then lastly, um, we're returning to, uh, a table item for our last meeting agenda, item twelve point four, which was a resolution to establish an advisory council on sustainability. I don't know if there's been any movement, any update, um, anyway, whatever proceeding. And I'm looking at you, Jill, but it doesn't have to be you.
Yes, well, my, my feeling at this point is that for us to do this would be redundant. Um, that there is a staff group that is drawing from each of the schools and meeting regularly that essentially is the same charge to bring to the board and bring to the district recommendations, a whole range of things. If we'd like to hear more about their charge, I could ask Armin Durick to come in and speak with us. Um, that, that our next meeting or whenever, uh, but at this point, I don't have any need or desire to, to use this forward so it can be taken off the table or however we want. I mean, I'm certainly very interested in this continuing, but I don't think we need to have a committee on. Another committee seems to be doing essentially the same work.
If it's okay by the board, um, Moira and I will work with Dr. Brown on this toolkit and see, uh, to get maybe Armin and the group of students and maybe that subgroup of staff to come once in the fall and once in the spring, just to keep us updated.
That would be great.
And I hope we'll get regular updates about things. We already heard some of that this evening with our new lunch plan, right?
Beyond sports, we can call it.
Can I just ask? Can I just add, uh, one comment? Jill, my, when I listened to the conversation at the previous meeting, my only thought was, we think scale here. I'm not sure the individual groups in each school are going to take the leap and think about things as broadly as we have in the past. We've done energy audits throughout the district. We're buying buses for the entire district. We've explored solar panels to replace energy for, you know, so I, it's, I'm just, don't want that to be lost in our calculations about scale.
Yeah, the good caution.
And maybe that's one thing we can ask the group as well, is to consider scale and district wide, and also hold our central office administrators to come for that very idea, that it, that is a great. And maybe at some point in time, not here, but it may be worthwhile, again, because the part of the community is transient, um, to have a conversation about some of the ways we can, sustainability for a little bit of time, not at the pace we, we know we must.
Right, but nonetheless.
But there have been some intended initiatives, including a ten million dollar energy performance, uh, program that we did probably, I wanna say six years ago now on the end, I don't know, it's dated probably six, seven years ago. So, all right, we'll, we'll bring that back and I'll make a note of mine in system. Um, any other business from my board colleagues?
I'll just note, um, that our last item, or next to last item is upcoming dates of importance, and mine does not have dates on it.
Or does mine?
Tuesday, empty date.
That was my fault. Sorry about that.
No fault implied, just, you, you, you wanna run through, you know the dates?
September fifth, we have a policy scheduled at five P M, a special voting meeting scheduled at six thirty for fifteen minutes. Then H R committee at six thirty, or six forty-five. Um, September twelfth is monthly voting meeting. No committee meetings. September nineteenth will be facilities and finance at five and six respectively. And September twenty-sixth will be curriculum at five, monthly discussion and voting meeting at six. Non-board meeting events coming up would be, as Dr. Brown mentioned, the, uh, August thirty-first, competition, walking back all of our.
The only addition to that for board members and also to add a message is, um, we are going to hold a board development session next Tuesday, the twenty-ninth. It's been on our calendars, and if you look at the board calendar, it's stated there. And prior to that board development session, we will have a special voting meeting to, uh, make sure that we are, um, following up with any personnel. We know that we are still in a heavy hiring season, as, as I understand it. And so there will be some, um, personnel items that we'll have to address next Tuesday. So that would be a short personnel, special voting meeting, and then board development session. The time, um, um, if we can do this for a quick second, um, I was hoping that we could start before six to get us out before hit eight. Um, I don't know if there's a time that works for everybody. If five thirty is good, if five is good, I realize that folks have different responsibilities and commitments. Is there a preference for folks?
I could do five. I'm coming back from Rochester again, so I will be back before then.
Okay.
I could do five.
You can do five. I told Katie, would five work for you?
Will get a sitter no matter what, so I am still flexible.
Want to do it again?
The twenty-nine. Oh, five, yes, I can, I got it. All right, so then we're gonna try to hold that and I'll connect with the board members who aren't present with us today, but we're gonna try to hold that at five P M. Um, that may change, just so board members know, but we'll give as much advance notice. We'll know in the next day or two what that timeframe will be. It'll be five or five thirty.
With the special voting meeting.
Special voting meeting starting first, and then board development session. Fantastic.
Emily, you said there was another special voting meeting on the fifth? It's September fifth. I sent it out on email asking for availability. I, I've got enough responses to make a quorum, so.
It's between, we reg, sometimes we hold a special voting meeting between committee meetings. So as one committee ends, there'll be a special voting meeting, and then we go to the next committee. And we'll send all those dates out, um, a little bit later today, or tomorrow. I'm sorry, apologies tomorrow. Well, if there's no other business, we'll call the meeting to close. Thank you all very much. Have a great evening, and we'll see you folks soon.